All right, good evening and welcome to the Belvidere City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting of July 22nd, 2024. If the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Albertini?
Here.
Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
Graham Kowski?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mahal?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Ten President?
Okay, thank you. We have one, two, three, four, five registered for public comment this evening. I wanted to change the agenda just a little bit. I wanted to move up public forum. I know that Chief Woody has something for us here on the agenda. I would rather have the individuals that are going to be honored here this evening be able to have that without waiting. So if there's no objection from the council, we'll just flip them. Okay? All right, Chief Woody, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I would like to introduce Chief Borden. He is from the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police. Last year, when we had the tornado rip through the Apollo, we had several officers from the Belvidere Police Department go in and assist with recovery and removal of several patrons at the concert at that time. I submitted a letter to the Illinois Chiefs requesting them to consider honoring those officers, and their response is to present that recognition here tonight. So I would like to go ahead and introduce and call forward Chief Borden. Chief?
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you. I'm honored to be here, and it's a privilege of mine. I hail from the City of Zion Police Department. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police to present this award, this honor, and this Medal of Valor. I'll start with a brief history of why I'm here and what was presented to us. On Friday, March 31st, 2023, at approximately 7:47 PM, the Apollo Theater located at 104 North State Street in Belvidere, Illinois, was struck by an EF-1 tornado. The tornado struck the Apollo and tore the roof from the fourth floor and threw it onto State Street. It blew the exterior bricks from the fourth floor onto the roof of the third floor, causing that roof to collapse into the Apollo and onto a crowd of people attending a concert event there. On arrival, there were hundreds of people both inside and outside of the Apollo Theater. There was debris and pieces of roof blown onto North State Street, making the necessary medical response very challenging. The officers that arrived, Officers McDermott, Wyland, Danilic, Ellingson, Garcia, Rackley, and Reese, witnessed numerous people suffering from various injuries and pleading for help and assistance. Officers were directed to the inside of the Apollo for a report of people trapped under the collapsed roof and brick exterior. Officers made their way inside and immediately began conducting a search and rescue effort, along with other first responders and people attending the concert event. It was a collective effort, of first responders and patrons, to pull several people out from underneath the collapsed roof and a couple feet of rubble and debris. Mr. Mayor, despite the risk of their own safety, they entered the building that had just partially collapsed, was still structurally unsafe, and had debris falling. The beams threatening to collapse onto the area, the officers were searching for anyone that could still have been trapped, injured, or needed for their assistance. On this night, each of these officers answered the call of duty, which saved lives. These officers don't respond to tragedy for the notoriety, accolades, or awards. They do it because each of them has signed up to serve the City of Belvidere, understanding that their service could cost the ultimate price. They have bestowed honor unto themselves, this department, and your City of Belvidere. I'd like to read, if I may. These are going to be presented to the officers this evening. Apologies. It says, "For your commitment, bravery, and excellence in law enforcement, the special recognition honors your heroic efforts on March 31st, 2023. Officers McDermott, Wyland, Danilic, Ellingson, Garcia, Rackley, and Reese, along with others who were dispatched to the Apollo Theater for a report of roof collapsing and people being trapped inside. It was later determined to be an EF-1 tornado that caused this damage. Upon arrival, there were several people trapped inside the theater despite the risk of entering an unstable building. Those officers made the choice to risk their lives to save others who were trapped. For your teamwork, courage, heroism, we present you with this Medal of Valor. You are a model for other law enforcement officers, and your efforts have made Illinois safer." I have one other thing that I wanted to talk about. "Bravery is the capacity to perform properly even when scared half to death." General Omar Bradley said this. "And courage is the price that life exacts for granting such peace." Amelia Earhart said this. So again, Mr. Mayor, thank you for having this distinct honor and privilege to meet these officers and your city and present this Medal of Valor to them and to all of you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Chief Borden. Very grateful. You know, I think I speak on behalf of the community and the council here and those that are in attendance, that, you know, a lot of times we don't know who our hero is going to be, but we know that when we call 911 or we have a time of need, that we have officers here in the City of Belvidere that respond, and with bravery and with honor. And I couldn't be more proud of them, and I want to thank each and every one of them. The City of Belvidere has always been known for a great law enforcement community. And Chief Woody, I appreciate you, and thank you for coming here this evening, and thank you to all of you.
Thank you. So Chief Borden had read the certificate. I just wanted to let the council and those in attendance see. This will be the medal that the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police will be presenting these officers, in addition to a ribbon that they can wear on their uniform. So, as he passes these out, I actually have one more, one more thing. So, in addition to the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police, Senator Andrew Chesney's office also wanted to make sure to recognize these brave individuals, brave officers, with a certificate state recognition, which says, "Recognizes law enforcement Medal of Honor recipient and joins in commemoration of the effort, dedication, and hard work that led to success, and further expresses its best wishes for personal happiness and professional achievement." His office requested that I go ahead and present these officers with these certificates tonight. So, in addition to the Medal of Valor, they will be getting one of these from Senator Chesney's office as well. So, again, I can't express my appreciation and the pride that I have for not just these officers, but all of the officers of the Belvidere Police Department. But make no mistake, this was not a effort by our department alone. It took everybody that was there that night, first responders, as well as the community, to come together to make this a successful operation. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get everybody out safe, but I can guarantee you that we got more people out without further injury than we would have without all of the cooperation that we got from fire, police, as well as members of the community. So, thank you, gentlemen. I can't tell you how proud I am. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on with the agenda. We'll go back to public comment. First, on public comment, we have Linda Cool and Daryl Johnson. Whoever wants to come up here, please? Good evening. If you just state your name for the record, please.
Linda Cool.
Thank you.
I'm here to talk about the garbage pickup, the mandatory garbage pickup. I'm not sure where to start, but at our address, we have never had to have, we have never had to pay for garbage pickup. We've never had to pay for garbage pickup because the church that our backyard is adjacent to, they have a dumpster right next to our driveway. And we generate, as far as garbage, about every two weeks, we have less than a grocery bag size of garbage, because we really, really take seriously recycling. There used to be a center for the recycle at the end of town, and we took ours faithfully every two weeks. And then, when we were suddenly without a car, we had no way to take our recycle, and we went out and talked to the people who did the garbage pickup. And they told us, as long as we put the symbol on a garbage can, that they would pick it up for nothing because we were recyclers. And the church has always given us the ability to throw our little tiny bag of garbage in their dumpster, since it sits right next to our driveway. And we've never had any problem with that. And then, all of a sudden, we're just, one day, we're just out there, and these cans show up. Having had no input into any of this, I've talked to many people, the neighbors, the landlords, they didn't know anything about it. And all of a sudden, we have to pay $25 roughly each month, quarterly, so that, and we don't, we don't even generate garbage. And when we do buy any kind of a big-ticket item, the store has always been very willing to take, after we get home and unpack it, the store has always been willing to take the packaging back and dispose of it for us. So, we don't have any problem with that. And we're just wondering, you know, we've been hit with this cost that's going to affect everyone, and we would like to know where was the input from the people. It just seems it was done in a sneaky and underhanded way. And I would like to know eventually who was responsible for this, so I can make sure that I don't vote for them next time. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. There were two, there were two names on that. Daryl, if Daryl wanted to come up and speak, he certainly will. Okay. I saw your name on there, and I didn't want to exclude you. Yes.
Same address.
Yep. Next, we have John Hempill. John, come on up, John. Good evening. Just state your name, please.
Hello, I'm John Hempill. This is about the garbage disposal situation. I feel let down by the mayor and those on the council who voted for this, since this has to do with every household. Why wasn't it brought to the people with an impact study? The way this has been handled has been poorly. I heard Belvidere was going to one carrier, and like two weeks later, garbage cans showed up. They weren't right in front of my steps. There was nothing at my door saying they were mine. Since I didn't have service, figured they were the neighbors, because they were closer to their yard. So, they took them. They called the company, and they said, "Well, keep the new ones. They'll take your old ones." So, I don't have no cans. I didn't have any service of any odd, like with heck, you know? Then, like, one week later, Bill showed up at my house. I'm like, well, I called the people and said, "I don't have any service." They said there was no opt-out clause. So, I have no cans, and they have not picked anything up at my house. Told them that they messed with my credit. That's when we'll hit the fan. Still have to deal with this. Before this, I have split the bill with my neighbors. They're empty nesters, and I don't put out that much. Together, we usually don't fill a can together. So, instead of saving me money, it costs me a lot more. You have handed the garbage company a sweet deal. This needs to be revisited, and an opt-out clause put in. You've messed up a whole lot of people. I am a senior on fixed income, and you say I make too much to get a lie heap or to have my real estate tax frozen. Also, in the article in the Journal, you said it's illegal to pick up others' garbage. Is this something y'all made an ordinance to make people criminals, or is it elsewhere written? That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Gary Kamholtz. Gary? Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Gary Kamholtz. I'm a Belvidere resident. I was born and raised in this town. Except for four years while I was serving in the U.S. Navy, I've had a Belvidere address. I've been following this garbage thing since its evolution. We were never informed about it in any other way than a council member that isn't of our ward. We heard it from them. I think there could have been some way that the city, the residents, were notified by an ad in the shopper, or maybe even council members knocking on doors. They didn't have a problem knocking on doors when it came time to be elected. This is a very important decision in Belvidere. Residents weren't aware of. Why a five-year contract? Most contracts of leases are a year, maybe two. Even union contracts void out at three. Why a five-year contract? Who came up with that idea? And as far as multiple trucks on roads, I think that was an excuse, and it was just a way to get people on board, because most people have attitudes with trucks anyway. They're a nuisance. There's been studies done with vehicles. With the new suspensions, with the tires, the makeups of these vehicles, the way they're designed and built, a registered vehicle weight can be overloaded by 10,000 pounds, and it still puts as much weight per square inch on the road surface as a modern SUV. So, I don't buy the thing with tearing up the roads, saving residents money. We have a couple rental properties, duplexes. One is a side-by-side, and there isn't an issue with that. Another property is an upper and a lower. We received one can at the upper and lower, well, two cans, actually, one for the recycle. So, it's one set of cans we received. But we've gotten a bill for three units. Considering Rock River doesn't service three units, how does this happen? We've tried contacting Rock River and Sunella Vale. We don't get any response from them, other than basically tough. We'll look into it. We'll get back with you. So far, it hasn't happened. Mr. Morris, you use the word franchise a lot. I understand. But according to the Oxford Dictionary, a franchise is, and I'm quoting, "It's an authorization granted by a government or company to an individual or group, enabling them to carry out specified commercial activities." Nowhere in this definition does it state that the residents must participate. I don't frequent McDonald's. They're a franchise. I don't frequent them, and I don't get a bill from them every month. Another statement directly from mayor and the council, and I had a council member directly telling me this, that you can't please 100% of the people. Granted, I'll give you that. But the deciding vote, when it voted, when the council voted on this, was 50%, for and 50% against, which naturally, our honorable mayor got to pass the deciding vote. We have two aldermen, alderpeople, councilmen in our ward, and they were both split on their decisions. One voted yes, and at the last minute, the second one voted no. All right, I take that back. My correction. The first one, they voted no. At the last minute, the other one voted yes, which all along guaranteed that it was going to be a no vote. How can your councilmen be separated and so far apart from their ward? If this is what one councilman says their ward wants, how can the other councilman say no? That's actually going to the council. It doesn't go to any individual. And the opt-out, when, I believe his name is Jason, was here and from Rock River, and said that, "Yes, you can opt out," the council came up for a vote, and the council two said yes, the rest said no. Well, if you were 50/50 on the service, the franchise, why weren't you 50/50 on the opt-out? Oh, a week later, one of the councilmen brought up that maybe they didn't know what they were voting on. If that's the case, this is disturbing on so many levels, that we got council that are voting on stuff they don't know what they're voting for. Another thing with the opt-out, maybe not opt-out, but put it on hold for people who go on vacation for six months out of the year, or maybe not vacation, just change their residence to Florida. Who's going to monitor them leaving? Who's going to trust them? If anybody can call up and say, "I'm leaving for six months," okay, your service is stopped. Who's going to monitor them if they come back? That's another question. But I believe that with the opt-out clause, your 100% that you couldn't please would have raised that percentage to maybe the 99.9% that we've heard mentioned of the people who are happy with this service. Then, it may have been a 99.9%, except for Mr. Morris. He would have been happy. That's about all I have. Anybody have any questions or discussion? I know-
It's public comment. It's not debate. It's not debate. Thank you.
That's why I know I won't be able to come back to this podium when I leave. Thank you.
Have a good evening. Okay, next, we have Lloyd Roberts. And just so you know, we've limited this tonight for obvious reasons to five minutes. If we can keep it within five minutes, I don't think that's an issue. So, thank you for coming here this evening. Just state your name, please.
Hello again. My name is Lloyd Roberts. I live here in Belvidere. I'm just going to read what I wrote. Nice to see the turnout. As I'm sure you all know, I am here once again before you to express my distaste for this ill-conceived and poorly planned and hardly researched garbage ordinance. I understand that you feel you must follow the examples of larger cities like Rockford and Chicago. I also understand that the majority of the citizens will save money with this, using this service. I have heard the arguments that this will save on street repair, but I still argue that the freedom of choice in a free market is also important. We do not have to follow the larger cities. We can be ourselves. And I'm just going to keep reading instead of making comment. All right. I believe that if the city would have sent out a statement of intent regarding the discounted garbage service to the citizens you are supposed to be representing, most of them would probably have agreed that it is a good deal, but you would have gotten feedback from those of us who disagree with the switch over. And I would have seen a benefit, and would have seen the benefit of including an opt-out clause in the contract. So, I implore you to reconsider adding the opt-out clause. There are many who would prefer it, even though they may be loath to speak out, whether it's because they're afraid to speak in public or they feel that there may be no point in doing so. And finally, I also implore you to consider that in future ordinances that are on the fringe, on the rights of individuals, remember this quote by Thomas Jefferson, "Though the will of the majority is in all cases to prevail, that will be rightful, must be reasonable that the minority possess their equal rights, which equal laws must protect, and to violate this would be oppression." Thank you.
Okay, and Alderman Snow, I have a public comment from you. Go ahead.
Yeah. So, this is to announce that as of July 31st, I will no longer be- So this is to announce that as of July 31st, I will no longer be, um, representing Ward Two. As an alderman, I've resigned as of that date. Um, that being said, I would hope that the administration would, um, give strong consideration to my opponent in the Republican primary, Ron Chilson, who's in the audience, the position, or some other, um, Republican that, um, can fill that position. And that's all I have.
Okay. Well, thank you. All right, uh, I think that's all we have for public comment. Move to, uh, the second page. Reports of officers, boards, and special committees. Item one, public safety unfinished business, we have none. Item two, public safety new business. We have item A, Police Department update. Chief Woody, good evening.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Uh, update since last month, recruit Tyler Stansford is in Week 11 at Sauk Valley College Basic Training Academy. Probationary officers Vinegas, Bendel, Gibson, Laura Parra, and Hauser are all in Step Five, which is solo patrol. Uh, and they're, uh, still on their probationary period. Officer Blankenship has since turned in his letter of intent to retire from the Belvidere Police Department after 25 years. For those of you that don't know, he is currently our community policing coordinator in charge of all of our special events and our volunteers in police service. So, uh, the police department is in the process of selecting another officer to transition into, uh, into his spot. His, uh, last day will be September 13th, uh, 2024. Officer Corn just received notice that he'll be receiving the Hero Award from Mothers Against Drug Drunk Driving. This will be the second year in a row that he received this award for his, uh, emphasis on traffic safety, including enforcement of impaired drivers. And that would, uh, complete my update for this month. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions for Chief Woody? Chief, I would, uh, have a comment that, um, obviously, uh, Mothers Against Drunk Drivers with, um, Officer Corn is, uh, quite an accomplishment, quite an achievement. Who knows how many lives he saved? And, uh, I know, uh, he always does a great job with that. And also, uh, Officer Tim Blankenship. I've been to many of the public meetings that Tim has put on everywhere from, uh, everything from, um, Neighborhood Watch, Keenage, uh, to Keenage Center. And, uh, he's been involved in the community, he's always at every event. And, uh, certainly, we will miss him. So we'll catch him before he leaves and, uh, but anyhow, thank you. All right, uh, we have item B, Police Department acceptance of donation. And your packet, uh, is a memo dated July 18th, 2024, from, uh, Chief Woody. That being a motion to accept donation, Chief?
Thank you again. If you turn to the motion in your packet, uh, the Belvidere Police Department's received a $50 donation from the Boone Retired Teachers for, uh, the department's K-9 unit. And I would request the motion to accept the donation of $50. Check number 1533 from Boone Retired Teachers for the purchase of supplies slash equipment for our K-9 unit.
Make that motion.
All right, I could have a motion of that effect. Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman Snow. Uh, thank you both. Any questions, any comments regarding the motion on the floor? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Right, we have, um, item C, Fire Department update. Good evening, Chief Shadle.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Over the past 30 days, the Fire Department has responded to 301 incidents, about 10 per shift. Of those, 204 were medical calls. We had four carbon monoxide found incidents. So make sure you have carbon monoxide detectors working in your home. It's colorless and odorless. There were four power lines down, obviously during the storms we had. We had four vehicle accidents with injuries. We had three kitchen cooking fires confined to the kitchen. We had a building fire. We had two outside rubbish fires, two gas leaks, two arcing, shorting electrical equipment calls, two animal rescues. Living up to our standard, I do believe one of them was a cat from a tree. And then we had a passenger vehicle fire. The Emergency Medical Care and Transport Division transported 169 patients to hospitals. 64 went to OSF. 56 went here in town, UW Belvidere. 33 went to UW Rockford, and 16 to Javon Bay. As far as ambulance billing revenue, I have the fortunate good news that we are fully connected with all major payers of insurers. And we received back payments from Illinois Medicaid and Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois for over 200,000, totaling the collected since May to be 456,835. So now that, that is all happening, and we're caught up, our monthly revenue should stabilize. And then we're going to talk a little bit about GMT and the next item. As far as our firefighter vacancy candidate list, the Police and Fire Commission confirmed the initial eligibility list. We had 27 individuals that passed both the written test and the interview. So our list will contain 27. They have until July 26th to submit for preference points. Once those are added, the Police and Fire Commission will rank them by score, and that will be our final list. And then we'll, uh, work the highest candidates through the remainder of the process. And hopefully, get a great candidate. Within the top five as of now, there's a handful with experience and are currently paramedics. So it's, we're very fortunate there. With our inspector vacancy, we have only had two applicants, one of which is very well-qualified. So I'll keep you guys posted on that. And that is the end of my report. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. Um, since you mentioned the inspections, how are we doing on those? Are we getting caught up at all with, um, new inspector that we hired?
So i—if you recall, Inspector Whittig resigned last, about a month ago. The way those work with, you know, the, the past dues, and then the deficiencies are the two metrics that we look at. Unfortunately, every day that passes, there becomes more of those. So they're, they're pretty stable, unfortunately. With additionally updating our fire code to IFC 2021, and then putting all hands on deck for the large projects like Yukon and the Cold Storage Facility, that is, is, is where we're at. So we unfortunately haven't been able to make too much headway. I, I hope we're able to get someone back in there, because we're just doing, we're basically trying our best just to service the contractors with stuff that's coming in, because we definitely don't want to slow any projects down. So that is our priority. A couple of the other firefighters that are also inspectors are, are coming in and, and trying to help pull some of that weight too, um, until we are able to, to find someone.
Right. So I, I know that, you know, before we had the inspector, you guys had a hard time keeping up with stuff with all the, everything else you have on your plate. So, uh, when we did hire him, was he able to dent that backlog? And we're just now getting behind again because he left?
No. So we're stable, and, and that will be, it'll be increasing. Now, the, it takes a while, it takes months actually, to create compliance, because you gotta set up the inspection. And then after you do that, or after you get feedback, you gotta give them 30 days to comply. And then you gotta set up another reschedule. So unfortunately, we weren't able to gain too much ground. A lot of, I mean, he was here eight months, and some of that is just learning our, our system, learning our, our platforms, um, the compliance engine that we utilize for that. So it's fairly, it's stable, but it's, there's, there's a lot of work to do, for sure.
So you're, you're hoping the, the new guy is going to be able to, um, take care of that load?
That is, of course, the hope.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else? Okay. We have item D, which, uh, Fire Department GMT intergovernmental agreement. In your packet is a memo from Chief Shadle, dated July 12th, 2024, that being authorization to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services. And, uh, as the chief said, uh, this GMT is another, uh, funding mechanism for us. This was a $1.6 million shortfall whenever Lifeline quit providing ambulance service. And we've had to, uh, make that up, or at least try and stay afloat until we were able to get, uh, some relief. And so Chief, uh, you want to comment?
Absolutely. So this is a required intergovernmental agreement with Illinois for Medicaid patients. And what it will do, it, it will enhance the reimbursement for those patients. It is a program where, after one year of service, which we've completed, we now can prove our costs essentially to the state, the cost per call. And then they'll use that to calculate, calculate the reimbursement rate. But this is only for Medicaid patients. And so, once all that's done, it's due by October for January of '25. So this is just the very first step. You sign the agreement that you're going to follow the rules and provide all the information that they need. And then, beginning January 1 of '25, there'll be an enhancement to the reimbursement for patients with Medicaid insurance. Now, for the program in Illinois, we will be compensated at a higher rate, but half of the increase in compensation is, goes back to the state. So that's just the way the program works. So it is a lot of bookwork for Director Hanson and, and myself, but it is a good program. And I would anticipate that it would yield approximately, right around 200,000 on an annual basis, once it's all rolling. So again, help covering the cost of, of that care. Again, even once everything is, is rolling, I don't want people to think that we're just collecting in this money. We're, we're hoping to essentially get reimbursed about 50% of our cost for the, the care we provide. Last year, we, we ran just under 2,000 ambulance transports. And so, based on the cost of that, we're, we're hoping to collect about over 50% of what the taxpayer cost of that is with this program. And again, just to summarize, this is just Step One, a required IGA from the state.
Okay, with that being said, uh, the requested motion then would be authorization for the mayor to execute the intergovernmental agreement between the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services and the City of Belvidere for supplemental ambulance rates as outlined in the attachment, attached agreement. If I could have a motion to that effect, please.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Stevens, thank you. And a second by Alderman Albertini, thank you both. Any questions, any comments? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So maybe Shannon can answer this. Um, I don't know off the top of your head. How much, um, ambulance deficit are we facing right now compared to, um, what we thought we were going to face in budget time?
So last fiscal year, I think we estimated a 600,000 for revenue. And we actually came in at 443. But part of that is because we had not collected Medicaid or Blue Cross Blue Shield at that point in time. Um, I think we estimated 800,000 for this year. And so far, we are sitting on the, what was the figure, the four? About 450,000 we've collected so far. So now that we have received the back, what we didn't get for Blue Cross Blue Shield and Medicaid, and what, and now that we're good with all the payers and we have a fairly steady stream of, of revenue, I think we should be able to hit that 800,000 this year that we have in the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, you know, it was quite an, an effort. Uh, we had six months' notice from Lifeline that they were going to terminate service here. Certainly, anybody in City of Belvidere who needed to be transported by ambulance and needed paramedic, uh, ambulance, ambulance, uh, transport, it caught the city off-guard. Lifeline had provided ambulance service for the City of Belvidere for 20-plus years. And, uh, we certainly understand now why, uh, they got out of the business. It's very tough for them. It was tough for them to make it, and they went out of business. And, uh, we obviously have to be able to provide transport, uh, transportation services here in the form of ambulance care. So we were able to do that. Hopefully, uh, as we get these GMT funds, uh, this will certainly help, so we can plan going forward, as Ms. Hanson said. Plan going forward, uh, a schedule of what the money that is going to be reimbursed looks like. So, uh, we have a motion, uh, and a second on the floor. Is there any other questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Item D, finance and personnel unfinished business, we have none. Uh, excuse me, item three, finance and personnel business, unfinished business, we have none. Item four, finance and personnel new business. Item A, uh, Finance Department update. Ms. Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I have three items to share with council tonight. On May 15th, Public Works Department increased its utility payment options for customers. Since implementing the new system, 2,931 successful online payments have been made, and 302 accounts have chosen to receive their statements electronically rather than by mail, which is an increase of 244 over the previous month. Uh, next item, as part of the city's audit process, it was determined that the software used to create building permit invoices was incorrectly calculating enterprise zone discounts. As a result, three invoices contained errors, resulting in the overpayment of funds. The software company has been made, um, has made the necessary correction, and the city will be issuing refund checks totaling 16,978.25. Going forward, a process has been established where staff will create a spreadsheet for each invoice, calculating enterprise zone discounts, and comparing those calculations to the invoice created by the software to ensure accuracy. And the final item, um, during each year's budget discussions, information is shared about it, elect, about elected official salaries and the process and timeline for making adjustments. Salary changes for elected officials must be done by ordinance no later than 180 days prior to the election in which the change will go into effect. For example, November 2nd this year for, um, the May 1, 2025 election. As there appeared to be interest in discussing salaries during budget talks, I wanted to remind council of the timeline and ask if you would like it to appear as an agenda item at an upcoming committee of the whole meeting. Um, city clerk's salary was last changed May 1st, 2020. Otherwise, mayor, treasurer, and alderman have not changed since May 1, 2012. Again, I'm just looking for, uh, on putting the item on a future agenda for discussion.
Okay. Anybody have any comments? Uh, I know that had come before the council at one time. Uh, if there's any interest in that, if, uh, it doesn't have to be now, but, um, if you do in the future, you can certainly, uh, you can certainly, uh, call City Hall and put it on the agenda. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hanson. That's all? All right, under five other, we have item A, the appointment of Megan— of Megan English to the Ida Public Library Board of Trustees. In your packet is a letter from myself dated July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, that being the appointment of Megan English to the Board of Library Trustees of the City of Belvidere. I would like to, if you'll bear with me here, her resume is included in your packet. Um, but I did receive a letter of interest from her dated, uh, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, and I will read it. Uh, greetings, Mayor Morris. I am interested in serving on the library board. I have attached my resume as I am interested in seeking a position on the board. I am a resident of Belvidere, Illinois and proud member of the chamber of, chamber with my business, Zeiss Classic Chicago. As a member of the community, my interest in serving on the board comes from my passion for community work and working with people of my community, especially our children. I find that financial literacy is an important part of our children's growth and their future. Serving on the library board will give me the opportunity to provide a positive, safe, and educational foundation that can impact our children, teens, and all members of our city. Having a career in the banking industry for over twenty-four years, a business owner, and also serving as a Christian education ministry leader within my church and a mother to four children, I believe I can be a positive impact and great role model for our city. I hope to have your consideration and should you need anything more from me, please let me know. So with that being said, I offer my appointment for the council's consideration and approval of Megan English to the Board of Library Trustees of the City of Belvidere. The appointment is to fill a, a current vacancy on the board created by the resignation of James Lee, which term will expire on July first, twenty twenty-six. I wanna thank Mr. Lee for his dedicated service to the library board and to the City of Belvidere. I would entertain a motion consenting to the appointment of Megan English to the Board of Library Trustees of the City of Belvidere to fill the remaining term created by the resignation of James Lee and that term expiring on July first, twenty twenty-six. If I could have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Gramkowski, thank you. And second by Alderman Stevens, thank you both. Any questions, any comments? Alderman Snow?
Did this go through the library board at all?
Uh...
To move forward to you?
I don't know if it did. No, no, I don't think so. Not that I'm aware of. I don't, I don't know if it did or not, but I don't believe so. Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor regarding the appointment of Megan English to the Board of Library Trustees of the City of Belvidere. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And moving down the list, item five B, we have ARPA funds. In your packet is a letter from Alderman Albertini, that being dated, uh, July twelfth of twenty-four. Uh, he wanted to make, he wants to make a motion to use the remaining ARPA funds, twenty-one thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents to remodel the council chambers. I believe that, he says, I believe it would look better when holding a public meeting as the current furniture is greatly outdated. So with that being said, uh, could I have a motion on the floor? Uh, motion by Alderman Albertini, thank you. And is there a second? Okay. Second by Alderwoman Mulhouse, thank you both. Uh, discussion, anybody? Alderman Albertini?
Thank you, Mayor. I realize this amount of money wouldn't be near enough to remodel what we have here, uh, but it would be a good start. I mean, if you look around, I'm quite embarrassed to be seen with some of this stuff we have here. Um, people come up to this podium, it looks pretty, pretty tattered. I think it's about time that we change it. It would be nice to have somewhere nice to play instead of being in a sand trap full of cat litter. So this is my thought about it and I'd greatly like to see it done. I know it would cost more than this twenty-one thousand, but it is a good start. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, any other thoughts, comments? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So, um, I guess I would direct this at Alderman Albertini, like what, are you looking for desks and chairs and, uh, a new, uh, up there where the mayor is or carpet? What are you, what are you looking to do with this money?
I'm actually looking at the furniture. I mean, that's the key thing I've noticed. The carpet, I mean, it's not the greatest, but it's doable. But the furniture itself, I think, is just, just not up to par for what you should have for this kind of meetings.
Alderwoman Frank?
Um, is this appropriate to use ARPA funds for something like this?
Uh, I would defer, I believe it is, yes. I would defer to the, um, Finance Director.
We can actually use ARPA funds for operational expenses. So it's, it's very generic and you can use it for an awful lot of things.
Alderman Flurry?
Thank you. Does anybody know when this was last updated?
Two thousand and six, when they built the building.
Right. And then, are there any, like, perhaps, anybody know about this or something to research, but are there any kind of grant funds, um, that are available? Or, I know, um, when I started in the military, there was a place where people, when they got new furniture, someone else could get the old stuff. So it wasn't new, but it was newer than what they had. So again, is there any, uh, state funding or, uh, maybe a location where you can seize who, someone who has remodeled, but, um, it's better than what we have, but it wouldn't cost the taxpayers or anything. It could be just something that we could upgrade without a cost to the citizens.
So as far as grants, we actually did apply for a grant last year to replace this furniture. So we didn't have to use funds. We did not get it, but it is something you can apply for on a quarterly basis. So we will be applying once again. I think, um, this next round, I think, is by, it, it's due by the end of September. So we will be submitting again, uh, maybe helping them understand a little more since you can't attach pictures or anything like that, helping them understand what the true condition of the furniture is. And maybe that'll help us. But we will, we will be trying again, um, this quarter for grant funds.
Thank you. And I agree with Alderman Albertini that our furniture does look outdated and not, uh, up to par for public and when people come in here. Uh, but I just, my point at this point, that I don't think it's a good use of the money at this juncture, but as, after we explore, uh, more options of where we could get a grant or funding or, uh, build it into the budget and maybe as a capital line item that we could discuss it further, um, that'd be my suggestion.
Thank you. Alderman Albertini?
Thank you. Yes, I wasn't looking for brand new, something a little more modern or something, you know, even if it's used, there's plenty of used furniture out there. The other thing is, we do have a short amount of time that we can use these ARPA funds for. It's the only reason that I suggested that we use it at all before it goes away. We only had till January first, if that's my understanding. So I thought it was better to use it for that than not at all.
Uh, no. Um, Ms. Hanson?
So we have until December thirty-first of this year to commit those funds, but we have until December thirty-first of next year to actually use the funds. So we do have to have them committed by the end of this year or, or lose them.
Yeah. And, uh, as a council may recall, um, I had actually been approached last year, uh, as I entered the building, um, I'd parked out front and gentleman, uh, who was from Belvidere, he, his company wanted to go ahead, he told me that they had grant money and asked us, uh, how we may be able to use that money. And so that's when, uh, we had applied for, uh, the grant, which was a fifty thousand dollar grant, I believe. And, uh, it was from a company, uh, and we did not get the grant, but as well, uh, we are gonna, are gonna try again. So hopefully, we'll do better this time, I hope so. But also, with, uh, in regards to the ARPA funding, we have a lot of things that we can spend the twenty-one thousand dollars and change that, that we have, uh, with the ARPA funding, uh, money left over. Believe me, we just had, we just had the wastewater treatment plant over these, this, uh, last, uh, whatever it was, seven to nine inches of rain, that we'd had some pump motors and problems that have gone on down there that, and I wanna thank, uh, Mr. Anderson and the entire, uh, Public Works Department for being able to, uh, make do. We had three days of rain, I believe it's unprecedented. It, maybe since I've been in Belvidere, I don't recall it. I remember, we had, uh, had four inches of rain in an hour once, but over a period of three days, when the ground gets saturated and then the next day, you get another four inches and, uh, the third day, you get, uh, maybe not as much, but we certainly had problems. So we have, uh, we certainly have projects, uh, that we can use this money for and, and we will. Uh, but it's up to the council to decide. And, uh, you know, we can wait, uh, Alderman Albertini, I understand what you're saying. Uh, we can also wait until, uh, we get an answer on some of the money that we have and maybe that changes, uh, perplexion, uh, of that. So, uh, Alderwoman Gramkowski?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you, Alderman Albertini, for bringing this to our attention. But it's just my opinion that twenty-one thousand dollars in a community that's not a wealthy community would be better served. Uh, we only sit here for two hours a week. It, I, I get it, but right now, I think it's bad timing to ask the taxpayers to kinda pay for something like that.
Excuse me, I don't think we're asking the taxpayers for anything. This is money that's already given to us. The other thing is, we're not the only people who do sit here. There's other meetings held in here as well that have to reflect the appearance that they're sitting at. It's, it's, it's no big deal one way or the other. It was just a suggestion on my part. Take it or leave it, I guess.
No, I, I, I appreciate that, but, and I just look at it, any kind of grant money we get, it's all taxpayer money. So, but thank you.
Okay. All right. Uh, I do believe we have a motion, uh, in a second then, and that would be specifically to use the remaining twenty-one thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents of ARPA funds to remodel the council chambers. Uh, if there's no other comment, any other questions? Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
No.
Motion, motion fails? All right. Uh, we have item C, garbage services. Uh, I don't have a memo, but I know that Alderman Snow had asked to have this placed on the agenda. Uh, so I guess I would, I don't know what your intent was here, but I'll turn it over to you.
So, at this point, um, would be interested in hearing what the, from you, what your meeting with, um, Rock River was, uh, when a lot of the controversy had come up, what the results of that meeting were, particularly for the people who were having issues with opting out and being told they were gonna get sued, if you have any input on that. The other is, um, maybe make a motion to repeal that ordinance and have it renegotiated.
Okay. Um, is that a motion or is that a?
I'd like your input on your meeting, if you could, um, what occurred and what the latest...
Well, you know, I've met with...
Drama is on that with their management.
Well, there's no drama. I met with, um, I've met, I have met with them. I, I've talked to them, uh, sometimes every day and, uh, it has been about individuals that, um, not really the opt-out. Uh, most of the people, uh, have been, uh, wanting to know if they, the dumpsters may be too big. Uh, some of the people are seniors. They weren't able to manipulate them. Uh, I have talked to everybody who has called me or I have attempted to call them back. But here's the thing, is that when you go back to April first, twenty twenty-four, and you go back to our minutes, there was a motion that was made, and I'm gonna let the city attorney comment on this, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna refresh the council's, the council's memory. Now, a gentleman was up here and he had mentioned, well, the mayor voted. Well, the mayor does vote and the mayor votes to break ties. Otherwise, how are you gonna, how are you not, how are you gonna get beyond a tie? Uh, that, I don't vote unless there's a tie. So with that being said, the motion was to go ahead and it was based upon, I had brought to the council, uh, many, many complaints from individuals, much more than I've received over this, uh, since then. As a matter of fact, the city, the, uh, the city, I'd never received anybody who said that they wanted opt-out until after the city had been exploring or had signed this contract. So, the calls that I had received were from seniors, many of them, I don't know who isn't on a fixed income in here, in this room, everybody's on a fixed income, myself included. I received calls from everybody, uh, from telling me that they understood or they didn't understand, but after we'd had a discussion, they did understand. The only way that we could have this savings, which some people have said five dollars, eight dollars, nine dollars a month, but in fact, some of the people that had called me were paying a hundred and forty-three and facing a seventeen dollar increase. So they were gonna be paying a hundred and sixty dollars a quarter. I knew this because I was paying, I was paying garbage, just like everybody else. I just assumed everybody, buddy else was. I assumed that if people own a home, they have, they produce garbage and I assumed that they had garbage. I didn't, I had no idea, not knowing it. So when you take into consideration the savings, which now, if you're a senior citizens, those individuals that were facing a hundred and seventeen, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and forty-three, a hundred and forty-four, were paying a hundred percent more than what they're paying now. They're gonna see a cost of sixty-seven dollars and five cents a quarter. And so the question was whether or not the council thought that we could actually implement a cost savings for the citizens. And I think they did the right thing. I think it was the right thing to do. Now, the council, as I had said, on April first, there was a motion made after I had voted to move forward. There was a motion made, and I'll read it, so that everybody in the audience can understand as well. There was a motion made, it was a motion by Alderman Burden, and it was seconded by Alderwoman Freeman, to add an opt-out clause in the agreement for waste hauling. That went to a roll call vote. That failed seven to three. So I know that, I, I see your hand. I know that, um, you know, there's a question about what happened to the five to five, but I think what happened, and I won't speak for anybody, but I do believe that what happened was, they realized that there would be no cost savings if there was an opt-out clause. And I think the night that the individual came here, he had addressed that with Rock River. I also know that there was some discussion, and it was brought up here this evening at, at the microphone, about having a, an opt-out for a period of time. That's called a sus, uh, suspension of services. So there is, and, you know, there is a suspension of services. People who are not living in their home and are not, are not there, say, people go to Florida or they go out of town and they know they're gonna be there. People that vacation or leave, maybe go spend time with family up in Wisconsin. If they call and they're not in their home, then they can have a suspension of service. So, and the other thing I, I wanna say is that, so in answer to your question, Alderman Snow, uh, nothing has changed, but the opt-out clause failed. And I'll get to the city attorney here in just a minute for some legal, for a legal opinion. But I want people to know that I had been called, and even up here in front of the microphone, people had indicated that the mayor must have been taking money, uh, for this contract. And, uh, that's insulting and that's definitely not true. The mayor or the city, as I had said before, get nothing. The people that benefit are the residents, the overwhelming majority of residents that I had heard from, that of course had garbage service. They were the ones that are gonna have the cost savings. I had been called a, I had been called by a couple different individuals, a German Nazi, which I don't appreciate it either. And, uh,
Why?
I don't, I don't appreciate it either. And... And the Germans, Nazis killed 6 million people. And so me being accused of a Nazi is very insulting.
Not true.
And so anyhow, I will tell you that I think this is a good, it is, it will save individuals. There are individuals that are seniors that have called me and told me, many more that are down here, that are down here tonight, or that have appeared before the council. And they've said, you know, I really appreciate the cost savings, because our garbage had gotten out of hand. And so that was the way the council had chosen to at least try and alleviate that. Now, everybody may not be happy, and, but the council voted not to have an opt-out clause. And so with that being said, I'm going to ask the city attorney if he wants to comment on that, or if Alderman Snow has a question for the city attorney. Alderman Snow, first.
My understanding, when the, the motion was being made about the opt-out, there was still talk about trying to have a second or third trash hauler be able to participate. So when I was voting on it, I was under the understanding it was to make sure that we still had the quote franchise, one-person deal. Plus the fact, the gentleman up, up at the front had said that you could not have service, essentially opt-out from that. And obviously, that's not the case when the people call his office, and they are told that they have to pay the bill, and they'll be in collections or being sued. So, that was my understanding, I don't know if anybody else had that understanding of the opt-out provision that was being talked about at that point.
Well, I will answer that, and again, I will make, I will read the motion. There was a motion by Alderman Birdon, second ward, and a second by Alderwoman Freeman, to add an opt-out clause. There was no, the opt-out clause, I think, says exactly what everybody understands. It says, opt-out, you can opt-out. I don't, I don't know how, I thought the motion was clear, I thought it was plain. And so that was what was voted upon. And I don't know how else, I don't know how to make it any clearer than that. I did not vote on that, the council voted that through. But I, I do agree with them, I do agree with, in order for us to have a garbage service, so that the overwhelming majority of the people that we had heard from are going to save. We know that individuals are going to save a lot of money. I had received calls from some people, and they said, well, Mayor, I, I said, if you don't mind me asking, since you've been, since you've called me, what do you do with your garbage? And they said, well, I take it down to Shell, I take it down to the Shell gas station. Well, that isn't right. And then I had individuals that come up here to the council that wanted to speak, and they had a dumpster on their property, they don't have permission to have a two-yard dumpster, whatever, you don't, if you're a resident, unless you're business, if you're a business owner, you do. And then they blamed the council, because they, you know, they had made the comment, well, I'm putting motors and what have you in it, and yard waste. Well, that's not what they're for. But the bottom line is, that individual did not have a license for a business. And, but yet, it became the city's problem when he found out that we were going to have a garbage franchise agreement. So, you know, there are individuals that may not be happy with this, and I understand that. I've, I've heard from it, I've talked to many of them. I've talked to, I think, 60 people, roughly, maybe 65, and I've called everybody back. Now, I had one gentleman in here that said he called for me, he's the only one, I didn't have that message to call him. But I've tried to call everybody back, and I've tried to explain to them. With that being said, after the 30 or 35 that was left on people that were unhappy, there were three, there were three individuals that said, no, Mayor, I didn't really understand that, but I would agree with it. And one of the individual that was still upset, of the three, lived in the county. And as I said, she blamed, she lived in, they lived out in the subdivision across to the east of Belvidere Road. That's not in the city limits. She wasn't upset with me for getting, or the council for voting for garbage service, it was a lot less, she just wanted it. She didn't understand why her Belvidere post, her post office was Belvidere, was her post office address. But she doesn't have water or sewers, they're not in the city limits. So her complaint, and what she was angry about, was that she's, she was paying $103 with a $17 increase coming, and the city of Belvidere residents were going to pay 76, and they were going to pay 76.05 and 67.05 if you're a senior. So that's what she was upset about. Well, then, I did call Rock River, and I asked them, what about the people on Eldiers? What about the people at Eldiers subdivision? You're already out here, you're on the east side, or on the west side of Belvidere, Belvidere Road. Would you want another 50, 60, 70 customers? I would imagine you would, and they said, yeah, certainly we would. So then they decided that they would, instead of her paying 120 or 103 with an increase, they'd pick it up for $90. So, even they were happy. They weren't happy, because they had no way that they could take part in the savings. So I guess when you look at it, you look at individuals that may not be happy, but the overwhelming majority of the people, I think, are going to be satisfied. And I will ask the city attorney, and you're never going to please everybody, and believe me, I know that, and I feel bad that some individuals don't feel that we can do better. But I also think you have to be, we have to be reasonable, and we have to be fair about, you know, who do you represent, who does the council represent? Do you represent 1% or do you represent the 99%? And, you know, when it comes down to that, then the minority, or the majority always has to, always has to rule, and it ruled, it ruled in this vote as well, and that's how democracy works. So with that being said, the city attorney, did you have any comment before, before, I understand, before we go any further? Alderman Snow had asked a question, and regarding going ahead and redoing a contract that the city of Belvidere has already signed.
I'm in a bit of an awkward position, because to give the council my best advice puts me in a position where it might be more difficult to defend an ultimate action than it makes. But the reality is, if there ever were litigation, the other side has very good attorneys who would know this information anyway. We have a valid binding contract with Rock River. It was approved by the city council, it was signed by the mayor, and it's binding. It does not expire until May 31st of 2029. There is no provision for termination by convenience. You know, we can't simply decide to terminate the contract, it is there. Not much we can do about that. If you recall, we sought a termination for convenience clause from Rock River, and they declined. And it was prior to you approving the contract. So there is no termination for convenience clause. The only way this contract can be terminated by the city is through material default by Rock River. And that is, obviously, they've got a chance to cure that too, it's just not, there's default, we can cancel, we have to give a notice, a time to cure, and then if they don't, we can declare the contract terminated. But that's not the case here, there's no allegation of a default, we just don't write the terms of it now. That leaves the city in two quandaries. Number one, if you were to repeal the ordinance approving the contract, and basically repudiate the contract, and that is a legal term, Rock River would have the ability to bring suit against the city of Belvidere and seek either specific performance, asking the court to make us adhere to the contract, or possibly seek monetary damages. Monetary damages could equal to five years' worth of rates for every single residence in the city of Belvidere. And that's a possibility, I'm not saying they would get it. There might be some offsets, there might be some other stuff, but that is, if I was them, what I would be seeking. The other aspect of it is, if you recall, we adopted a new ordinance, versus, excuse me, we modified an ordinance to provide for the single-source franchise. And a gentleman during public comment quoted a definition of franchise. There's two kinds of franchise, there's exclusive franchises, non-exclusive franchise. This is an exclusive franchise. And the best way, the best way to explain it is, a lot of times, for example, in a fast food company, you will franchise a location. Within the franchise agreement, they'll put in the contract that they'll agree not to franchise another location within X number of miles of the franchise location. The vast majority of, in fact, I'm not aware of any waste hauling franchises in the area, are exclusive franchises. Akin to the old AT&amp;T franchises and things like that, back when there were landline telephones. So this is an exclusive franchise. We modified Section 95-50, I'm saying we had made in the city council, to provide that there would only be one exclusive franchise for residential waste hauling services. In that, we created a penalty provision. The first penalty provision applies to any company that attempts to provide residential service within the city. So for example, if Drell's Waste Hauling sought to enter the contract with Alderman Florida to haul waste garbage, residential waste garbage, I'd be in violation of that provision. It carries a minimum fine of $200 per location per day. Part of the franchise agreement with Have Rock River allows them to enforce that provision in the city's name and on our behalf. Meaning, even if we chose not to enforce that, even if we repudiate this contract, Rock River can still bring suit against Drell's Waste Hauling to enforce the contract. There's a similar provision for residences. We do provide in our ordinance that no person shall contract with a waste hauler to let garbage, rubbish, recyclers, all the yard waste from their single-family home or two-unit dwelling unit. That's just the, we didn't make that the $200 fine, that's the usual city ordinance fines. But again, Rock River does have the ability to enforce that provision in the city's name. So I guess where I'm going with this is, we could always try to get them to put in, or amend the contract, to have an opt-out provision. We've tried that, we had talked to them, they're not willing to do it. Why would they? We have, don't have frankly, a lot of leverage on them at this point, because we do have a signed five-year agreement. My best advice to the city was, if you were to attempt to repudiate this contract and essentially get a do-over, you're looking at very significant potential financial liability on behalf of the city. And even if you did that, were willing to incur that liability, Rock River would still have the potential to enforce that contract and the penalties against any other third-party hauler. Meaning, I don't think, if I was Drell's Waste Hauling, I wouldn't want to come into the city and do business. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? Alderwoman Freeman, did you have your hand up?
I had several points to make, not specifically a question for Attorney Drell. I wanted to read what I got from a woman that wasn't able to be here tonight. She says, I wish I could come, but I'm unable to, my complaints are seniors duplex, and why we have to take it. I've already complained to the city and garbage company, who was supposed to call me back three weeks ago. Never got a call back. What right does the city have to make a decision for me, when I was never asked if I wanted it or not? What happened to my rights? That's discrimination when I was not given a choice. As a senior, I have one or two small bags a week, and used to take it to my son's dumpster. Now I have to bring out two containers. I am 77 years old, and do not know what I'm going to do in the snow. That is indicative of a lot of complaints I've had. So I know that the mayor is going to say, well, you're not supposed to be hauling it to your son's dumpster, or your son's not supposed to come pick it up and throw it in the trunk of his car when he visits to take it home with him, because you have to have a license to haul garbage, correct? But, at the same token, if I'm giving my buddy a ride to work, and I'm not even doing it free of charge, I'm charging him to take him, do I need a taxi license for that? I, I kind of equate that with that. So, you know, Mr. Hemphill came up, and, you know, he had entered into an agreement with his neighbor, because neither have significant garbage, that they would use one service and split the cost. Now both of them have full cost. And I just, I gotta say that I've been an Alderman for eight years, and I've knocked on hundreds and hundreds of doors while campaigning, and just during my time as Alderman, and not a single, single person has ever approached me, or asked me, or talked to me about their unhappiness with the garbage system that they had before this. Not once, not one complaint, not, not even an inquisition. Now I'm just bombarded with calls constantly. The other thing is, you know, I, if, if everybody on my street, everybody has grass, right, everybody has a lawn, everybody's got grass to mow. So everybody on my street uses a lawn service. But I choose to mow my own yard, and sometimes I might let it get up as high as it's allowed to. But, you know, that's my prerogative, right? So now, they come to me and they say, well, you know, we're going to force you to have lawn service, because it's going to save the rest of us money. So, yeah, I mean, it saves me money. I, my garbage bill went down from $109, and I got to tell you, if you're paying $140 for garbage, you're generating a heck of a lot of garbage, you got a whole lot of extra cans. So, $109 down to 69, I'm saving $13 a month, which comes out to about three lousy dollars a week. But hey, it ain't about me saving money, because I don't just represent myself, I represent my ward and everybody in this city. And to me, to forego saving three lousy dollars a week, so that people out here in this audience, and people that have called me, and are not experiencing hardship, or paying more than they were before, is absolutely how any empathetic person would feel.
Anybody else? Alderman Snow?
Alderman Moho, did you want to say something? It sounded like you did.
Well, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Moho, yes.
Thank you, I just wanted to state, when Alderman Snow was talking about the discussion regarding the opt-out, I think Alderman McGee started that conversation with that motion. I also was under the impression during the discussion that we were talking about opting out and having another carrier come in, because you liked the service provider you had. I was under the impression that snowbirds, people that, the very few people that do not use garbage would be able to have that. So that was the, that, that was my understanding as well, I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. I did have a lady, Sharon, she, she said I could use her name, Sharon. She lives on Florence Court, and I did try to help her with some garbage issues. And I did call you, and you did call her, and I did talk to Brent Anderson, because they kept on getting the runaround, they were saying that the lines were too low. And then Brent said, well, I'm going to go out right now and I'll check it, and they weren't too low. And then they had times where they weren't picking up their garbage at all, and they'd say, well, I'm going to come back, and then they, then they didn't. But I did call some other people that are people that call me for other issues, and they said I could use their name as well. Joan, who lives by St. James, she said she's a senior, and she's very, very happy with her garbage service. Another lady, Roberta, she's very happy. I did talk to a neighbor, oh, no, I did have a lady that lives on Warren Avenue, and she was irate. And so I called her back, and she didn't want to have garbage at all, because she's not home. She's a hospice worker. She's a hospice worker and she's never home. So I did call the city and I said, "Can you check and see if she has water usage?" And she didn't. I talked to Jordan, and he said, "No, she has no water usage." And so I called her back, and I said, "If you're not there, you can suspend your service." You know, just call and tell them that you're going to be gone for three or four months or whatever. And then she says, "Well, you know, my mom just died and my brothers have to come over, so we're going to probably have garbage." And she says, "But I would have to have the cans left at the curb." And I said, "Well, I know exactly where you live, I can bring them up for you." And she was like, "Oh, that is so sweet." And at the end of the conversation, she was happy. So I've only had one person call that was not happy. And I just wanted to say their names. I'll give you addresses and phone numbers, because I will verify that these people said I can use their name. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alderman Snow?
So again, I was never in favor of this. I thought we had a sweet deal, and talking to other people that live in other jurisdictions, they thought it was great that we had the opportunity to have multiple suppliers for trash, because they weren't happy with the person they had, but they were in a franchised community, and they thought it was great. One of the things, and I get your terminology, that the council approved this. Well, the council was 50/50, and in that regard, the mayor approved it. So I hate to throw that, you know, "Oh, the council approved." I can tell you, the council was 50/50. The mayor was for it.
Wait a minute, not the opt-out, not the opt-out?
Again, my understanding, when we were talking about the opt-out, it was for the purpose of trying to get a second or third trash hauler. I don't know if that was your intent, but that was the impression I was under when we were, because the conversation that was just before that was what, that's what was being talked about. The other thing is, this is a form of socialism, we're just being forced to have to participate. Where does it stop? We also have utility lines that carry both Xfinity slash Comcast and Frontier. Are we going to force one of them to opt out and just go with one carrier? So we can strong everybody into having a, you know, a sweeter package for what the council slash mayor thinks is a better deal? Just tossing that out there. Again, not a big fan of this whole thing, and I think Rock River does a disservice every time they keep telling everybody they're going to sue them.
Okay, anybody else? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thanks. So I just had a question for Attorney Drell, I guess. So, how many complaints? Because it seems to be daily, at least on Facebook, of, "I haven't gotten cans, they didn't pick up my garbage, they don't call me back, they lied to me about this or that." How many complaints constitutes us being able to tell them, "Look, you have reneged on your contract and we need to either get this stuff addressed or we're going to cancel you?"
So as I mentioned earlier, the number is, there is no number. There's no magic number. I use the word "material default," if you recall. And I also use the term of a ability to cure. We have to give them a cure period to come into compliance with whatever that problem was. If you keep having the same problem over and over again, and they keep curing, yes, at some point that could become material. But as far as the garbage cans go, and again, I'm going to speak a little bit anecdotally, just because I lived it, just, I don't live in the city, but I've dealt with the phone calls and I actually saw them dropping off the cans, and quite frankly, I'm glad the company dropping off the cans doesn't actually work for Rock River. The way they do it is as a garbage can company, and that's why everybody's garbage cans look the same, whether it's Rock River, Marangue, whoever, they all buy from the same few sources, and they slap a different name on it. And they're the ones that drop them off. And I don't know if you saw the guys driving through town, but they're basically in the back of these open back trucks with rails on them, the guy's staying in the back of the trucks, literally in some cases throwing them off the truck, other cases, they're a little more careful. I remember I was driving home from on 20 over by Walgreens towards Appleton, and I looked, and there's three guys hanging out in the back of the truck flying down 20 at 55 miles an hour. I was very happy nobody died. So there were mistakes obviously made with dropping off cans. Either they didn't get dropped off, or they dropped off too many, actually, in some cases. We had a few of those. We had a couple of cases where they tried to drop them off, and the resident said, "I didn't order this, take it back," so they took it back. And later on, the resident said, "Wait a second, I need those garbage cans, because I have a franchise now." What we were able to do in Sarah's office was fantastic with this, is, most people could call directly to Rock River, and for the first week of service, if somebody said, "I don't want it," and then they actually did want it, they dropped them off new for free, no drop-off charge whatsoever. For those that didn't get them, they would drop them off. Because of the problems with, as we can all guess, in the initial few weeks, and maybe it got better, it may not have, that the call center was swamped with calls and people couldn't get through, if they called the clerk's office, she created a list of everybody that needed cans, gave that to Rock River, and they arranged to have cans brought out. And that can still be ongoing. So if somebody doesn't have cans, let us know, we'll make sure they get cans. So I guess where I'm going with that is, Rock River, if there was a default early on, has remedied that default and is continuing to remedy that default, as far as the drop-off of cans go. But no, there's no magic number. And we anticipated certain types of violations coming up from time to time, right? And we all know that drivers miss spots once in a while. We all know that occasionally, a truck may have a failure and they drop garbage on the ground, and driver may not notice it, or I'll just choose to say they may not notice it and drives away. If you look in Section 17 of the contract, there are damage provisions, called liquidated damages, for these, call them more minor breaches. If they don't get the yard, the waste, and they don't go out and pick it up within 24 hours, because, you know, somebody calls and says, "Come get my garbage can, you missed me," and they don't do it, there's a certain liquidated damage they have to pay for that violation. There's some violation for not getting the cans. There's a cer, actually, there's, that would roll in the first one. There's a certain violation for if they spill debris on the road and don't clean it up within a certain timeframe of notice to clean it up. So those kinds of more minor, where you're going at these recurring kind of things, are covered by that liquidated damages provision. The idea being, you know, if you keep doing it, you're going to lose money, guys. So those would be covered by that, more than a pure default breach. Recurring, large-scale lapses of service certainly could be a breach, but we're nowhere near that.
Any other questions or comments? Did we have a motion on the floor? Okay. All right, the other thing, real quick, I did want to comment. So, over the last three and a half years with inflation, I don't have to tell anybody that's listening, and I don't have to tell anybody here in the room, that the price of everything has went up. Groceries, fuel, garbage, everything has went up. And so anyhow, everybody's paying more than they were, and there's no question about it. The Consumer Price Index is 21.3% over the last three and a half years, but with garbage, with groceries, with fuel, we know it's a lot more. So this contract is a five-year contract. So instead of paying over the next four or five years, 100% increase because of what we've had now, price of the, the price of inflation, the rise in inflation, this contract is a five-year deal at 3.5%, capped at 3.5% a year. So over those five years, it's going to be, not only is it going to be half, some people are going to be paying half of what they were paying, they're also, over five years, not going to be paying again 100% more, because it was runaway. So over five years of this contract, they'll be paying 17.5%, 3.5% a year. So this contract actually helps residents and takes the price of inflation even out of it. So I did want to make that comment. Also, the city council would have had no idea, would have had no idea who was or wasn't using garbage service in this community. I think they thought that the majority or all people that live in the city of Belvidere have refuse. I do know that we do the same, they do the same things in parts of Belvidere. Greenview Estates, Four Seasons, our mobile home parks, they have a single hauler, for a couple of different reasons. And I know this, because they don't have their streets tore up by having four haulers at either one of their parks. And they also have, they also save the residents a lot of money. They're paying 15, 18, 16 dollars, somewhere around there. They do make them put their garbage containers, I believe, on the same, all on one side of the street, at least I believe Greenview does, I don't know if Four Seasons does that or not, but it's not too complicated. So there is a savings here, and that was the intent, to be able to help people with runaway inflation and really wasting money after street repairs. You have four haulers, like we had in the city of Belvidere. They drive down the street, not one time a week, but four. I may have one, you may have one, you may have one, and your neighbor may have one. Well, now you've got, we pay, our taxes pay for our road repairs. So even though you may not be happy with the price of it, we're paying money to have our roads repaired. Much more, four times as much, with the wear and tear on the streets. So those were just a few of the intangibles that I think the people, I would hope, would understand. But there was no way of knowing that anybody individually, there was no intent to have anybody ill-willed towards anybody. It was just, how do we save residents a lot more money? And I think the council got it right, as I'd said before. I think they got it exactly right. And anyhow, Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. Again, I just have to push back a little bit. Yeah, after COVID, inflation was high, because we had a supply issue. Currently, our inflation rate is 3.0%. You negotiated a contract where it is, the rate's going to go up 3.5%. That's a half a percent higher than our current inflation rate, first of all. Second of all, people that live in green farms and Four Seasons knew what they were getting when they moved in there. They knew they had a single hauler service, they knew that that's what they were signing up for. They live in a type of HOA, and they knew they weren't going to be able to call who they wanted for their garbage service when they moved in. It wasn't something that was, they had that choice, and then it was taken from them. The other thing is, you know, you can't on one hand say that over 70% of the people had MDC, so their service didn't change. But then on the other hand, say, you know, we had four garbage trucks all going up and down the street every day, every week, at the same time, like you're talking out of both sides of your mouth. You can't have 70% of the people, I'm telling you, on my street, 80% of the people had that. And our garbage night was Monday night, it got picked up on Tuesday, and the other people had waste management, there was about five people on the street, they got picked up on Thursday. So that's that. I just, I gotta push back on your inflation, like, yeah, prices rose, but guess what? Inflation has drastically come down, and wages have risen at the cost of inflation, so...
Is that it? All right, I don't think anybody in this room, I don't think anybody's fooled and would think that we've come, we had a 21% increase, and now that it's 3.5% piled on top of that, 21.5% that we haven't had inflation and that we're paying more for services. I think everybody understands that, I don't know about that math, but anyhow, if there's nothing else, we'll move on. Item D, water and sewer, step two rate increase. In your packet is a memo from Director Anderson dated July 12, 2024. That being a water and sewer, step two rate increase. Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, like the mayor said, memo in your packet about our step two rate increase. I'll refer you to the budget memo that was attached, where the budget, the projected budget for our FY '25 deficit in the water was 291,000 and sewer of 306,000. Unfortunately, yeah, the deficits are still there, they are existing, and as outlined in that memo, I would recommend approval of the second step increase to the water rate in the amount of 15 cents per 100 cubic feet, to be effective August 1st. The new rate of $1.87 represents an 8.7% increase, and the average monthly bill would increase $1.20. And then on the sanitary sewer side, I would recommend the second step increase as well in the amount of 20 cents per 100 cubic feet, to be effective September 1st, 2024. The new rate of $3.16 per 100 cubic feet represents a 6.8% increase, and the average monthly bill would increase $1.60. And then I'd also remind council that on the sanitary sewer side of things, as outlined in the budget memo, we would be looking for a third rate increase on the sewer, and that's going to be based on what the cost is, repayment cost for our 2018 wastewater treatment plant improvement project, which is in its final legs, the work has been done, and we're just now finishing up the final paperwork. So I should be able to certify that to EPA hopefully sometime in August. And once I do that, then they will, they will approve that, and then once I know what that number is, we'll be back to council then to, with a recommendation on what we're looking for, for that rate increase.
Okay, Mr. Anderson, did you have any requested, no requested action tonight then?
We'll, the motion, be looking for a motion to approve the second step increase in the water rate in the amount of 15 cents per 100 cubic feet, to be effective August 1st, 2024. That's motion one, and then we'll do a non-motion for the sanitary side.
Anybody, anybody make that motion? Make it for discussion. Alderman Stevens, second? Second by Alderman McGee, thank you both. Any discussion? Mr. Anderson, I, we had talked, you had talked about this with the council prior, and can you tell us, you know, I know it's wastewater treatment, some of the issues that we've had at the wastewater treatment plant, but I think you put it into perspective, four cents per day, is that accurate?
That's roughly, yes, roughly what it would be for the typical, typical usage, based on 6,000 gallons of water per month. Again, remind council that we do have currently some of the lowest water and sewer rates in the region. Our average, the average for our region is $75.48, and Belvidere's bill, prior to the first rate increase, was $41.12. So we are almost half as much as what the average cost is for, for some, most of our neighboring communities.
Thank you. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So Director Anderson, your proposal actually raises $67.20 a year for the both of these, which is about $5.60 a month. So if you add that to our current 4112 monthly average bill, we're still about $28.76 lower than the average water and sewer bill for a region.
Correct.
But then, we're going to do another increase, another third step increase, correct, coming up in December?
A third step increase recommended for December, whether or not it's December, we'll see what, how long it takes for the EPA to get through the process, because we are required, we used a low-interest loan program to pay for our 2018 improvement project to the tune of about, the original was like $4.5 million, and it's, we're coming in right in, in that area. So they'll figure out what the, what the repayment is for that, and that's a 20-year repayment. So then we have to basically do a rate increase to guarantee that, and that was part of the loan agreements we have for that project, which is the terms to use for those lower-interest loan programs. And you'll note too, that we're using the same program only on the water side for our new well, except we're getting principal forgiveness, or we're basically getting a grant, but anything that's not covered, if it were to be not covered, it's now, they've changed the loan interest program to a 30-year payback. it's now, they've, they've changed the loan interest program to a 30-year payback instead of 20. So it's a little bit better terms for us in terms of your annual payments. But that, that will be effective as we pursue additional funding for further improvements at the wastewater treatment plant going forward.
So this, this second step pretty much mirrors the first step. And then the third step will mirror this for another pretty much $5.60 a month increase again?
The third step will be dependent on our actual case of where we're at come December 1st or around December 1st, that timeframe budget wise, and see where we're at. And then also what our final costs are and what we have to repay. So if we do, yes, the, these two steps, the second round is a mirror of the first. It's, we basically split it in half and did it over two steps. So if that total of 40 cents, 100 cubic feet on the sewer side, if we close the gap, if we're fortunate enough to lessen that increase, then we'll, we'll, we'll lower the increase needed on the third. I doubt that's going to happen at this point, just the way that things are projecting out, but, but hopefully that's possible. So the third one will be whatever it's going to need to be based on the repayment to the IEP A loan.
So all said and done, residents might be looking at anywhere from $5.60 a month to $8 a month increase in their water bill?
Somewhere in that vicinity. And again, we will look at these again overall as part of next year's budget as well. And also keep in mind that we are still behind what we had been traditionally putting aside to depreciation, which, which pays for those big ticket items. These rate increases that we're looking at right now does not bring us back to that point. So eventually, we need to get back to that point at some point in time. But this is just to cover the projected deficits through the budget that was approved.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? Alderman Albertini?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. How did we miss these deficits when we made up the budget? I mean, is this not projected or is this something that came up a little later in life after we went through all this tedious times of making up a budget for the water and sewer department?
No, it was all presented as part of the budget process.
And it didn't get approved?
The budget was approved, yes.
Okay, but then how did we get this deficit?
There's no deficit.
What it's saying here, the proposed budget project of deficit in water and a deficit in sewer. I misunderstand something, I think.
Yeah, there's no deficit with respect to the budget. We have to increase the rates to meet our loan obligations with respect to the EPA on the low interest loan that we receive for the improvements. So what that means is we projected having to do these increases back in the budget. We didn't increase it at budget time because we didn't have to charge the additional rates yet. That's now coming due now. So what Brett's suggesting is we raise the rates now so that we comply with our own budget and meet the requirements of the EPA. In other words, there's not enough money coming in to meet the low interest loan obligations as well as our current regular obligations. And that's what we anticipated happening all along. And that's what was presented to you at the budget retreat over at the Park District.
Okay, I guess I misunderstood. I get it now. Thank you.
Okay, any other, any other comments, any other questions? All right, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Have a roll call vote, please.
Albertini?
Nay.
Burton?
No.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
No.
Gramkowski?
Nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Six in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And Mr. Anderson?
The second motion, the recommend second step increase in the amount of 20 cents per 100 cubic feet to be effective September 1st, 2024 for sanitary sewer.
All right, the price of doing business. If I could have a motion that effect, please, for discussion. Motion by Alderman McGee, thank you. And a second by Alderman Stevens, thank you both. Any questions, any comments? Alderman Flurry?
Thank you. Just to clarify, I know we talked about this during budget time, but the way our rates work is we're, the citizens are just paying for the cost of having water in sewage. So we're, there's not like, we don't have a plus amount of money. We figure out how much it's going to cost to run the city sewer and water so that it's a break even point, so that the citizens are just paying for this service. They're not, this isn't like MFT funds where we're, you know, taxing gas and as much gas as we can go, we're going to, you know, have a plus budget there. This is just straight in, whatever it costs, it's divided up and split amongst the citizens.
Yes, water and sewer is your proprietary accounts that only can be used for water and sewer. So water, the water rate pays for water department items. Sanitary sewer pays for the sewer items. And they don't intermix. We don't get any general fund money into that. We have grants and things that we can apply for that we've used, such as YARPA funds, which has, has been able to offset the amount of rate increase that we need to keep things in operation for both water and sewer.
Right, so again, I think that, you know, as we do a great job in Public Works of trying to stretch every penny to make everything work, but we have aging equipment and things need to be replaced. And each time we meet, it seems like there's something wrong at the waste treatment plant just because it's old and it has to be repaired. But again, just, I think to clarify, because when people hear rate increases, they think that we're just raising the rate just to do it to, because we want more money to pay for something else. But this is just a straight, whatever it costs, that's what we're passing on to consumer. And we're still half of what it costs in other communities.
That's correct.
Again, thank you to you and the rest of Public Works for all the hard work you do to make us have that less amount. But although there are sometimes increases that we can't avoid.
Correct. And we had our, I guess our last rate increase was probably before this, step one that was approved was back, I think, in 2011. So we went quite a few years without a rate increase. And the reason we were able to do that is because of the improvements that are being made over time and the efficiencies that we've gained from those improvements has allowed us to forego those rate increases. And as those improvements have been made and we were basically squeezing as about as much out of those that we can, it's come to the point now that we have to raise our rates to make up the difference.
Okay, thank you. Alder, Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So the only revenue for water and sewer is the water and sewer bills. Is, can we not, are we not allowed to use any general fund money there at all? They have to be self-sufficient? Thank you.
And they're also required to be, to basically pay for the cost. We can't gouge, we can't charge $10 all of a sudden just to have money on hand. We got to be able to justify those expenses, which is basically what we do.
And keep in mind that we haven't had any, I mean, the last time we had any real improvements down to the wastewater treatment plant, we have made improvements. But the wastewater treatment plant, I think, had their major maintenance in 1985. And so it's been quite a while. I appreciate Director Anderson and all the Public Works, all the water and sewer employees. Believe me, over this last rain, we had seen some of the equipment that was, that we are going to have to have repaired. And I think Alderman Flurry pointed out that we're not gouging, but we have to provide when you flush a toilet, it has to work. And when you turn the spigot on, it has to, it should work. And we are still the lowest, the lowest water and sewer provider in Northern Illinois, so. Anyhow, any other questions? All right, we have the motion on the floor. If there's nothing else, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed?
No.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Burton?
No.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
No.
Gramkowski?
Nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Nay.
Six in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And we have item E, which is to go into executive session to review executive session minutes pursuant to 2C 21 of the Open Meetings Act. Motion by Alderman Snow, thank you. And a second by Alderwoman Mahal. All those in favor, well, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed nays? A clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Ten in favor?